Meeting, meeting in the Joe N. Idlet Jr. T E C. Today is Monday, November seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five. I'd like to call this meeting to order. The time is six P M. I ask that out of respect to everyone, please silence all electronic devices at this time. Please check, check, check. Also, if you have any material you wish to share with any board member, please give that to our executive assistant, Mrs. Morey. She's seated right here. All right. At this time, I'd like to call for the Pledge of Allegiance. It will be led by Vero Beach High School's Air Force Junior R O T C Detachment Zero Four Three, under the direction of Major Retired Dean Radsdale and Senior Master Sergeant Retired Sean Rude. Please stand.
Flight forward march. Flight up, left face, present colors. Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen. My pleasure. To the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Order, colors. Post.
They always do a great job. We appreciate that. Board members, at this time, I'd like to call for a moment of silence. On November thirteenth, this community lost a pioneer. Victor Hart Sr. passed away at the age of ninety-four. Mr. Hart devoted his life to strengthening the Gifford community and expanding opportunities for others. He led the Indian River County N double A C P, guided countless local efforts to support families, and earned the respect of leaders across the county. In two thousand seventeen, the community honored his legacy by renaming Gifford Park as Victor Hart Sr. Community Enhancement Complex, recognizing his decades of service and advocacy. His life reminds us of the power of commitment, courage, and steady leadership in shaping a stronger community for future generations. Please join me in a moment of silence as we honor the life and legacy of Victor Hart Sr. All right. Board members, we are to adopt the orders of the day. Before I ask for that, Dr. Moore, there was an item that was discussed at workshop today that would be possibly pulled from the agenda unless it wasn't amended. Was it amended?
It was amended, and the update, the agenda has been updated.
Okay. So I'm going to ask for adoption of the orders of the day as amended. Are there any items board members wish to move from consent to action or add to the discussion? Seeing none, we're going to go ahead and call for the motion to accept the adoption of the orders of the day as amended.
So move.
Second.
Dr. Jones and Dr. Pasca, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It passes five-zero. Thank you. We are to the superintendent's report. I recognize Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We will pull up the presentation. It has been a very, very busy month. There it is. So let's quickly review all the activities that took place from this year, last board meeting to this one, October twenty-ninth, immediately following our last, the opportunity to celebrate the flag designer winner for City of Felsmere, absolutely outstanding. We had the rescheduled homecoming parade. You can't see me, but that's me in that teeny tiny car in the passenger seat. So I did have a cramp after that, but it was a really, really great parade. Also, that is me serving some coffee at the other facility, just kind of celebrating all the work that everyone in this district does. And this is our Anne Frank exhibit, which is done by and taught by our students, both on November fifth and November thirteenth, at each of the two high schools. If you have not been to that, I would mark your calendars for next year. Had the opportunity, November fifth and sixth, to speak and have a forum with the other superintendents of the year. As a finalist, had the opportunity just to engage in some dialogue about the work that we're doing here in the school district of Indian River County, an absolute great time to share the work that we are doing. And then a number of community events, we're talking through the innovation project that we are, we are in. We've done it pretty much every night or day. Veterans Day, we had the salute to veterans on November eleventh. Heard a great message from Jaime Aberte, our Director of Security and Safety, where he motivated and inspired all those students that you see at Storm Grove in that picture. And then coffee and conversation, showed up at a Dunkin' Donuts and just had the opportunity to engage with whoever was there, had a nice crowd, about twenty-four, twenty-five people just stayed and listened to the work that we're doing. Great initiative, and looking forward to doing more of those as we move through the month. And then, me and Jake were hanging out November eleventh. Not really. At our first playoff game, where Vero Beach won, and will be playing again this upcoming Friday. And this is the Bar Association membership for Indian River County. Once again, just another opportunity to provide an update to that association regarding the work that we're doing here in the school district. And then just this past Saturday, it was this Vero kickoff classic, just kids having a great time, programming and learning and highlighting the work that they do each and every single day, just an absolute great thing to see. And then surprise opening act at the Jake Owens concert, where the Vero Beach band actually came out and kind of brought that concert to the very, very beginning by performing. It was really, really cool to see our students at that concert. And that is our update for this past month.
Thank you, sir. At this time, we're going to move to our citizen input. Our public input. So these are the procedures for public input according to the school board policy zero-one-six-nine-point-one. During regular business meetings of the board, the board offers the following two opportunities for the public to provide input. One, on an agenda item, that's consent agenda and/or action agenda item, prior to the board taking official action on that proposition. And two, during the public input section for items not on the agenda. For those of you watching, please understand that though we have established proper decorum and expectations of professionalism, when it comes to the individuals who wish to provide public input, this is a live broadcast. Each individual member shall be allotted up to three minutes during public input and for up to three minutes on an item on the consent agenda and/or action agenda, as indicated in the order of business, as it exists at the time the meeting starts. The time period may be adjusted by the presiding officer, and individuals may only speak once about a given item. Individuals who have filled out the speaker's form are allowed to address the board. Individuals may not delegate their allotted time for other individuals to speak. During the meeting, if an item is moved from consent agenda or discussion agenda to the action agenda, individuals will have the opportunity to speak to the item prior to the vote on the board. During the meeting, please refrain from clapping or outbursts of any sort so that we can proceed with dignity and decorum by not infringing on any individual's First Amendment rights in this limited public forum setting. As board members listen to individuals without interruption, individuals are asked to give board members the same courtesy. Board members may or may not address any individual's statements at the end of the public input comments. I will be recognizing, calling up the individuals two at a time in the order in which the speaker forms were received. The first individual will be called to the podium to speak, and the second individual will be in the line to speak. The executive assistant to the school board will be the official timekeeper, and the time shall start when the speaker is at the podium. As you see, the time clock is visible to your left on the dais, and you will hear a beep at the end of your three minutes. If you have any, anything you'd like to give board members or the superintendent, please do that through our executive assistant, Mrs. Morey. She's seated right here. All right. We have several speakers. Let me quote the first one. We have seven speakers tonight. All right. Margaret Murray is our first speaker, and Susan Stoller is on deck.
Good evening. My name is Margaret Murray, Vice Chairman of the Education Champions. Earlier today, I attended the superintendent workshop, and I left truly impressed. I saw a leadership team that is innovative, forward-thinking, and deeply committed to addressing enrollment challenges and planning for the future of public education here in Indian River County. The work being done behind the scenes is remarkable, and it deserves recognition. And this is American Education Week, a week meant to honor our educators, our students, and the public schools that are the backbone of our community. Yet, here in Florida, we are facing an unprecedented assault on those very schools. Every year brings a new attempt: vouchers, the so-called Schools of Hope, and whatever else the governor and the legislature decide to roll out next to dismantle, disrupt, and ultimately destroy our public education system. As a taxpayer, I'm angry. I am frustrated that more voices, especially from within the educational community, are not speaking out loudly and clearly against these egregious actions. Silence is not neutrality. Silence is surrender, and we cannot afford to surrender our public schools. The School of Hope enter, entering our community is a perfect example. They are arriving with no students, yet they will immediately begin relying on our resources, our infrastructure, our transportation grid, our taxpayer dollars. And where are we thinking their recruiting efforts will target? Right here, our families, our classrooms, our teachers, our students. How long before they start poaching the very educators we are struggling to attract and retain? It is outrageous, it is predatory, and it is unacceptable on every level. Tonight, I'm calling on the parents of this district, those who believe in strong, stable public schools, to organize, to stand together, and to speak out. We cannot sit quietly while a takeover of our schools unfold in plain sight. Public schools belong to the public. If we don't protect them, no one else will. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Susan Stoller is next. Thomas Kenny is on deck.
As an advocate for publication, for public education, I am in awe of this district. The accomplishments, thank you, the accomplishments, dedication, and expertise of both administration and staff are truly exceptional. To believe in school choice and welcome the challenge of being the best so that our schools are the choice made by parents is awesome and inspiring. Despite an A rating, our state continues to drain district dollars, seemingly an attempt to weaken public education. Examples are vouchers and Schools of Hope funding. My question tonight, is the state's newly adopted Vision for Education another threat to public education? The Phoenix Declaration authored by the Heritage Foundation and a part of Project Twenty-Twenty-Five is the Florida State Education, Board of Education's Vision for Education. Heritage Foundation President Roberts' words when introducing the Phoenix document suggest a message and agenda beyond the motherhood and apple pie words that are in it. Choice, quality, content-rich, fostering, fostering good, true and beautiful, and even achieving full God potential. And in President Roberts' introduction then, he says, "It's time to go on the offensive. School leaders, educators, school board members, and policymakers need to set shared, unshakable principles to reclaim education and put students, not leftist activism, first." Rather a partisan statement, in three minutes, one can only bring attention to the document. It is important to go beyond much of the seemingly harmless language to how the tenants translate the actual meaning now and into the future for students, schools, our culture, and our country. The Declaration, our state's vision for education ignores pluralism and diversity as American virtues and values. The document threatens to censure history and uses parental choice as a cover for censorship. It challenges historical integrity by narrowing what is acceptable. In teaching and approach, who determines what is true and what is beautiful? Who determines what is fad? My concern, how will the adoption of the Phoenix Declaration as Florida's vision for education change how and what is taught in our public schools? Thank you.
Thank you. Thomas Kenny is next. Tammy Stelter is on deck.
How y'all doing this evening? Hope everybody's well. I'm here to talk about the desegregation order and the meeting particularly of November fourth, where your lawyer was accused of lying publicly, very publicly, by committee member Mershon Green. She told Matt, Matt Carson, essentially, "Let's not lie, Matt. The law, in theory, that's how it operates, but in reality, that's how it doesn't operate," which didn't make any sense, because I don't think, when people are losing in argument, they like to say things are theoretical because they've never actually attempted to put the practice of equality into action. And that's what was going on here. It's getting ridiculous, and it's your fact, and I want to say this to all of you, if you watch these meetings and those of you who have participated in them, that there's not good faith discussions going on centered around the K P Is. Mr. Carson pointed that out repeatedly. Their lawyers, the N double A C P's lawyers sought to use it as a courtroom with cases wherein a normal courtroom, there would be discovery, and you guys would know exactly what they were talking about in terms of these students that were disciplined on the transportation system. Terry will know, because she's the board rep there, and she could fill you in. But the reality of it is, you guys had no idea what they were talking about, these cases. You had a sense, you heard about it, but you didn't get to, as a committee side, to dial in and hear what was actually going on with those cases, and what were the outcomes and the things that they had complaints about. It was rude, and it showed no good faith whatsoever. This is important. This contract thing that's going on, I know it was mandated by court originally in nineteen ninety-four. It's not working. It's not working at all. You're still waiting to go to mediation on the previous points. And that was on the teacher mentorship program. Tony Brown accused people at the thirty-two-twenty mark, employees of lying and altering and manipulating process of hearings regarding discipline. And Mershon, who said, without the person being present, "I don't want to accuse Mr. I mean, you're accusing people of manipulating stuff and not giving you guys the case in which they're talking about. This has to stop.
Thank you, sir. Tammy Stelter is next. Nicole Campanelli is on deck.
Thank you. I'm here tonight to talk about Policy Five-Two-Two-Three. I have been trying to contact members of this organization since May. Yes, since May. I've tried phone calls, emails, I've tried having our headquarters office in Ohio contact you. I've had one conversation, one, with Kelly Basura, which was very brief. She asked for some information, which I sent to her immediately, which was irrelevant, basically, to the, the policy here. And once again, I, on follow-up attempts, I got zilch. I, I would really like to find out how to work with this organization to implement a policy that you've had on your books since two thousand thirteen. And the very first line of that policy says, "It is the policy of the school board to cooperate with those parents who wish to provide religious instruction for their children." We have tried having the parents initiate this, as I was instructed, and I recently got an email that says, "Take my son out. The Magnet School said they are not affiliated and would not approve of an outside program." Now, you'll notice the very last line of this policy says that they will not discourage or encourage anything. They're going to be neutral. Well, telling children they can't participate in something or their parents is definitely not being neutral. I've had anything but cooperation, and, and I don't know where to go without escalating it. I don't want an adversarial relationship with this organization. We want to benefit the children, the teachers, the administrators, the schools, the families, communities. This is a win-win. This is a school district that's, that's bleeding participation like crazy, apparently, and this is one of the options in a multifaceted response to that that could really help people. Families would, you know, participate, it's optional, nobody's forced to do anything, but there are families that would see this as a benefit to this school district. They would gladly keep their children here if they could enroll them in Policy Number Five-Two-Two-Three's program for release time for religious instruction. So I, I, I'm kind of stumped. To me, every time I hear a no, it's simply because people don't have enough information. They need to understand how it works. But I can't help anybody understand how it works if I can't even have a conversation with somebody. I've even emailed somebody at this board to try and find out what the policy or the form F one, Five-Two-Two-Three F one is referred to in the policy that parents are supposed to fill out. And once again, I get no response. I, I just don't understand. If you're looking for ways to maintain student population, one of the best ways is listen to your constituents, listen to your parents. This is something they want. I wouldn't be here if there wasn't a whole bunch of parents who had signed up to promote this program to this level in this county. Every county in Florida is basically going this direction. So thank you so much for your time, and I look forward to hearing from somebody.
Thank you. Nicole Campanelli is next. Heather Askin is on deck.
Hello. So I can't be the only parent who's deeply concerned with the proposed time changes, especially as a single parent. My son and I chose Gifford Middle School. He's thriving in seventh grade, taking high school honors classes, and he was just accepted into National Honor Society. My youngest is in kindergarten at Osceola Magnet. So if the school's start times change to match K through eight, and then the middle schools, I, along with Cal, with others, I'm sure, I understand, we're going to be, have a big impact. I understand why you're considering this change, but I'm sure, like myself, to pay for before care as well as after care so that everybody can be on time to school, the schools that we chose, it's unattainable as a single parent with limited resources financially, and it's not feasible. I won't jeopardize Vinny, what my seventh grader has accomplished, and it wouldn't be fair to him to change him back to Osceola Magnet, but I physically cannot get him to Gifford and then him to Osceola for them to both be on time next year. So I am just asking the board to explore other options, because this change would be impossible burden for single-parent households like myself. So I appreciate you for listening this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Heather Askin is next. Arlene Jamison will be our last speaker.
Hi, I'm Heather Askin. I'm an education champion and advocate for public schools.
Can you turn the mic toward you better? There you go.
I'd like to congratulate our school board for making lemonade out of lemons by working with less money and making more out of it. Thank you for giving our over fourteen thousand students the time and consideration when consolidating our schools. Thank you to our administration, teachers, support staff, that are understanding that these changes are necessary to keep our public school doors open. Public schools do not discriminate, and there is a comfort in knowing that all children are welcome regardless of their race, creed, denomination, and learning needs. As we celebrate our schools' astounding test results, we push ourselves continuously to improve, regardless of the extreme challenges of a small budget due to a voucher system that does not have a household income limit or accountability for academic performance. We have a school board that can bob and weave its way through it, and, but you have your hands full. Just as we start to have some hope that we had turned the corner after celebrating the amazing test scores, school, school A ratings and district, state ratings, another type of hope showed up, the School of Hope. Rather than go through all that that entails for the School of Hope private charter school that is state and locally funded in addition, to take over a portion of all the, they will take over potentially a portion of a school or an entire school of our county. I asked the board, what do you feel the objective is for the voucher system and the School of Hope, apart from the obvious parental choice? When it comes down to it, is there a state agenda to privatize our public school system? How will the Phoenix Declaration effort affect our local schools? Also, our governor is suggesting to eliminate property taxes. How will this work? How will we work with this? I encourage everyone who is listening to please do their due diligence and research the Mater Academy. Don't bother looking up for the school reviews, because the review option is turned off on the Google searches for each school. Research the founder and president Fernand Zuleta and Academica, a pro, a for-profit education management company worth over a hundred million dollars, which Mr. Zuleta is the founder and C E O of. This company works with Mater Academy. Research the Heritage Foundation. Since we are the first state to embrace the Phoenix Declaration, from what I've read, the Heritage Foundation advocates for policies that critics describe as a plan to privatize public education by redirecting public funds. Thank you.
Thank you. Arlene Jamison is our last speaker.
Good evening. We were fortunate to have Dr. Jacobs speak to us last week and explain the intricacies to combat the Schools of Hope invasive takeover of our classrooms. Oh, whoops, I meant co-allocating in our schools. Sounded like a complicated puzzle of who goes where, when, but I'm glad to see some of the schools combining, allowing students to participate in sports and the arts. I'd like to tell you how things were back in the Stone Age when I was in school. Our schools were K through twelve, and there was something very comforting knowing where your home was for the next thirteen years. Elementary school kids looked up to those in junior high Elementary school kids looked up to those in junior high, and they in turn looked up to the senior high kids. Plus, there were far fewer transportation costs and an economy of scale. But what was so outstanding was that elementary school activities were plentiful, as were junior and senior high. Seventh through ninth graders had junior varsity sports competitive with other schools, plus intramural sports. We had junior band, junior orchestra, chorus, theaters, clubs, et cetera. Senior high had all the above plus more. We had a great library before books were banned, terrific language labs, and so on. When the school became full, they just built another one. Of course, times have changed. IRC students have incredible opportunities now in science, culinary arts, dual enrollment, and all the other inventive paths they can pursue. I certainly don't need to tell you about them. But I do think there's something to be said for combining grades when possible. The new K through eight curriculum, a perfect example. Besides the obvious advantages, older kids' leadership, helping hands, and setting positive examples all rub off on their younger counterparts, hopefully. Maybe in 2027 or '28, all our schools will be of full capacity and still getting A's. And in case there's an empty school left over after the reorganization, you can sell it for a profit, just not to the Schools of Hope. Just a final note, as a member of the Opera Guild, I support a class act which brings opera to the classrooms. There's a really charming highlights video of the kids at Felsmere and Beechland Elementary Schools putting on the opera Hansel and Gretel. From sets to costumes, instruments, and performing, you can never start them too young to appreciate opera. If anyone wants to see it, I can get you a copy. Thank you as always for giving us the opportunity to speak out our minds and for doing everything that you will do. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Moore?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, speakers. I don't want to butcher your name, Stelter. Someone from my office will reach out to you tomorrow, and you can speak directly with me, and then we'll have that conversation and determine what the next steps are. All right. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah.
Mr. Rosario?
Yeah. Dr. Moore, will you follow up with us on that, please? If you can send us an email, because I did a Word search for your name. I did not receive any email, you know, as far as this board member is concerned. So, I do apologize for that, but I may have missed it unless it's under a different name or a different email. But that's okay. We don't have to get into that now. I just wanted to acknowledge your concern, and I think that this policy seems to be pretty old policy, but it's still our policy. And I'm sure Dr. Moore will follow up appropriately so that the school and the district will be able to accommodate you and any other parent who has these, this request, because we should. The other thing, Dr. Moore, I noticed that Ms. Campanelli has just stepped out. I suppose that we're going to take care of that as well. I'm not sure if she is aware of the opportunity for busing. I didn't hear that in the concern. So, this is, go ahead.
No, I think, as I was telling the board earlier today, every time we engage, we learn. And I think she is in a unique situation where she's at a middle school and a K8 at the same time. So, Beth is going to collect that information, and we'll problem-solve around, probably a very unique, where you have one child in a K8 configuration, but one of those two children is in a K5 space. So, we will problem-solve.
Yeah, so, this is a perfect example of as much as we can do to reach out to the families as possible and then go beyond that as well. Because sometimes, you know, with all the communication that we do have and all the information that goes out to those two families on focus and through the schools, it's still, we're not reaching everyone, obviously. And this is a perfect example of how maybe, I'm not sure, maybe she doesn't know about the opportunity for busing for school choice as a school choice parent. And so, I'm glad that we're going to be able to take care of her situation. I hope that all parents understand that if they have an issue or a concern or a question, that we will, by all means, seek a solution to whatever their situation is, because that's, I know how that feels, and that's hard to deal with. So, I'm glad that we're going to, we're going to take care of that.
Dr. Pasca?
Yeah, in response to the comment about 5223, Policy 5223 regarding absences for religious instruction, I certainly hope we're following that policy, and we have a way to evaluate the situation and get to the bottom of it. We'll have to look at it, but clearly, policies have to be followed, so. And you should not have to work hard to make that happen. It should be pretty easy. You should be able to just request it, and it gets approved. There's really no discussion about it. It's you and your kid, and it's your decision. So, hopefully, we will reach that point where that's what is happening.
Anyone else? Dr. Jones?
I just want to thank everyone for speaking tonight. You always listen and learn. If you watched the workshop, we had a great discussion about a lot of things, especially with Schools of Hope today. And we appreciate the support, because all of us at this DAS knows that we have some big challenges out there, but it's going to take more than us to do something, and we appreciate the community's support. We're working hard, because obviously, funding is based on student enrollment, what we can do to consolidate, what we can do to innovate, and how we can bring our community in. I think we're working very, very hard on that. So, we appreciate you. And going back to this, the policy for religious instruction, I'll just give you an example, but this was before this policy. It was 2009 when I was principal of Sebastian River High School. Many, many of my Hispanic students requested Our Lady of Guadalupe off, and it was never an issue. The principal would sign it, and you can move on. So, I hope we take a look at this for our parents who believe this is something that would be good for their children. Thank you.
Okay, and I just want to reiterate that I'm concerned that you said you reached out to the board member several times about your concern about this policy. We have an email that either goes directly to each one of us, or there's one that you can email all board members at the same time. I, too, did that search while you were talking to see, you know, why haven't I heard? When you're frustrated and you're saying, "We're not getting a response." So, I'm a little concerned if you sent an email, why we didn't get it. So, we need to maybe troubleshoot that as well with you to make sure that we're getting the emails in a timely fashion. So, we appreciate that, and hopefully, you get this righted right away. So, thank you for speaking. All right. Board members, we are to our consent agenda. I'd like to call for a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
So, move?
Second.
Dr. Jones and Ms. Rosario, any discussion on the consent agenda as amended? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Okay. We didn't have, we had an item pulled, but are we discussing that item tonight, or did you pull it totally off?
It just was approved.
It was, the agenda was modified.
So, we approved it as amended? Okay. So, I just want to make sure that you're not bringing it back up to us again. Okay. We are to our action agenda. Action Agenda A, Appointment of a President, Vice President, and Secretary-Treasurer of the Leasing Corporation. Purpose of this action item is to officially designate the Chair of the School Board as President, Vice Chair of the District School Board as the Vice President, and the Superintendent of Schools as the Secretary-Treasurer of the Leasing Corporation, as per the bylaws of the corporation. I'd like to call for motion to accept the President, Vice President, and Secretary-Treasurer of the Leasing Corporation.
So, move?
Second.
Dr. Jones, Mr. Dyer, call for the vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It passes 5-0. Action Agenda Item 9B, Approval of Appointment of a Citizen to the Indian River County Metropolitan Planning Organization, MPO. County Citizen Advisory Committee, CAC, for Transportation and an Alternate for this voting position. This is a volunteer position that began on September 11, 2012. The term of this position coincides with the board's organizational meeting, and it is a voting position. The CAC meets the second Wednesday of every month at 10:00 a.m. in the County Administration Building B, Conference Room B1501. Last year, the position was filled by Mr. Jeff Andros, serving half a year, and Mr. Michael Marsh, alternate. Both members will vote on the citizen member and alternate positions. We need to announce the names of the citizens that applied to serve as committee member or alternate. Dr. Moore, would you like to provide us with those names?
Ms. Dorie. Ms. Moore will do that.
There we go. We had one applicant, and that was Mr. George Retaco.
All right. I need a motion?
So, move?
Motion?
Oh, second.
Dr. Pasca with Mr. Rosario as a second? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, it's asking for an alternate, but we did not have an alternate put in place.
No, we didn't.
Got it. All right. Sorry, I'm trying to get to that spot. Okay. All right. We are to Action Agenda 9C. And before I go further, let me go back to 9B a second, just because I want to make sure, okay. So, we, because it says, "Read it into the record." So, George Rotasio, is that who you're saying?
Retaco.
Oh, Retaco, has been voted on by this board. All right. Moving on. Action Agenda Item C, 9C, Approval of Appointment of a Citizen to the Indian River County School Planning Citizen Oversight Committee. Re-interlocal Agreement for Public School Planning for this voting position. Peter Robinson has served on this committee since its inception in 2003 as a citizen member and is interested in serving, continuing to serve. Mr. Robinson submitted a brief summary. The purpose of the committee is to monitor implementation of the interlocal agreement and to report to participating local governments, the district school board, and the general public on the effectiveness in which the interlocal agreement is being implemented. And it is a voting position. The committee meets once per year on a date and time to be determined in Conference Room B1501. Board members will vote on the citizen member and the alternate positions. I'd like to ask for the names of those citizens that have asked to be considered.
We have two applicants. First applicant is Mr. Peter Robinson, who would like to continue serving. And the second applicant is Nicole Gardner.
Okay, so, we have two applicants that wish to serve. I need a motion?
I'd like to make a motion for Nicole Gardner to be the...
For each, for each person. You need to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion for Nicole Gardner to be the primary and Peter Robinson to be the alternate.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion?
So, I chose to, I mean, obviously, he has done an excellent job, and it's certainly not a diss towards him and his service to our community. Hopefully, he doesn't interpret it as that, but he has been doing it since 2003. So, I think it's, you know, it behooves us not to give someone else an opportunity to participate in local government. In reviewing her application, you know, she's a mother of five. She got her nursing degree, and then she went back and got a master's in nursing, and then she got a nurse practitioner degree. She worked for years in a hospital, and then she started her own wellness business. So, she started her own business, and she has five kids. I mean, just, she sounds like an amazing person. I'd like to just give her an opportunity to do it, and we'll see how long, you know, they want to do it, but hopefully, they can share and maybe, you know, participate together somehow.
Okay. Do I ask for a motion for the next one or after we vote? Do I ask for a motion on the second person or after we vote? Okay. All right. Any other discussion?
Publican Elementary in Sebastian River.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay? Okay. It passes 5-0 for Nicole, and we'll ask Peter Robinson to be our alternate. Okay? All right. Action Agenda Item 9D, Approval of Appointment of Citizen to the County Commission's Value Adjustment Board, VAB, for this voting position. So, this is Flor- Florida State Statute 194.015. The Value Adjustment Board is an independent forum created by the Florida Statute, Chapter 149, 194, sorry, to provide property owners with the opportunity to appeal their property value or denial of an exemption, classification, or tax deferral. The committee meets each year, as needed in the County Administration Building A, Room A2511. Angie Sheppers was appointed by the school board last year and is interested in continuing to serve. The position is for a calendar year, tax cycle, and it is a voting position. Board members will vote on the citizen member and alternate positions. Please let us know she is the only applicant, correct?
Yes, she is.
Okay. All right. So, I'm going to ask for a motion?
So, move?
I'll second.
A motion to move Angie Sheppers back? Okay. And we have a motion by Dr. Jones and a second by Ms. Rosario. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And that passes 5-0. All right. Action Agenda Item 9E has been amended, and that was, excuse me?
The policies.
Yes, all our policies. So, this item was presented at the workshop today in compliance with Policy 0171, Policy Review, Policy Review of Policy 0131 Legislative, and Chapter 120 of the Florida Administrative Code. Approval is requested to advertise and hold a public meeting for the proposed policies prior to adoption. This update reflects changes from 2025 Florida legislation and Department of Education guidance, state board rulemaking, and Neola client collaboration with a review of relevant federal and state laws and regulations, court decisions, and Attorney General opinions with revised in conjunction with Neola Volume 26, Number One update. The changes or updates include a total of 55 policies. Fifty-four policies with revisions, and one new policy is listed below. There was one policy, I believe, that was pulled, correct, Dr. Moore?
Revised based on board feedback.
Revised, okay. And for the record, what policy number was that again? 1420? All right. Call for a motion to approve a request to set a public hearing date to adopt the revisions to the school board policies as amended.
So, move?
Second.
Okay, Dr. Jones, Dr. Pasca, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It passes 5-0. Action Agenda Item 9F, Discussion Initial Public Hearing and Approval of Educational and Operational Innovation and Efficiency Planning Initiative. Do I need to read all this? It is an entire page.
I don't know about that.
Okay. At the school board business meeting held on October 27, 2025, Superintendent presented the recommendations for the district's operational innovation and efficiency policy initiative. After a robust discussion, the school board voted to waive or extend the deadline in Policy 5121 Controlled Open Enrollment to extend the school choice application window to February 6, 2026, in order to provide families with sufficient time to make informed decisions pertaining to the anticipated presentation, adoption of the associated rezoning and boundary changes. The School Board Operational Innovation and Efficiency Planning Initiative, which includes a public hearing on November 17, 2025, and a special meeting and public hearing on December 17, 2025, to go through the rulemaking process in Chapter 120 Florida statutes, which governs the rezoning and boarding determination process. As part of the operational authority, the superintendent presented the relocation or colocation of the following schools. Vero Beach High School, moving the Vero Beach Freshman Learning Center to unite with the main Vero Beach Center high school campus. Oslo Middle School, relocation to the current Vero Beach High School Freshman Learning Center facility. Osceola Magnet K8 School, relocation to the current Oslo Middle School campus. Rosewood Magnet School, relocation to the current Storm Grove Middle School facility. Sebastian Elementary School, the Arts, colocation to the current Sebastian Middle School facility. And IR Prep, colocation to the current Treasure Coast Technical College. And IR Prep, co-location to the current Treasure Coast Technical College. In accordance with Board Policy 5120, Assignment Within District and Pursuit It to the Florida statutes cited therein, the superintendent will recommend to the school board the attendance zone boundaries for the non-charter public schools within the school district. The procedures by which the board will adopt the attendance zone procedures for the school shall be in accordance with the requirements of Florida law. The board shall adhere to the rulemaking requirements set forth by Law 0131 and FS Chapter 120. When creating or revising rezoning and boundary changes include the following, sorry, when revising school attendance boundaries. The schools that need school board approval for the recommended rezoning and boarding changes include the following. Glendale Elementary School, Citrus Elementary School, Sebastian Elementary School of the Arts, Dodger Town Elementary School, Gifford Middle School, Oslo Middle School, and Sebastian River Middle School and Storm Grove Middle School. Attendance Boundaries for Various Schools in Indian River County is the rule title. The purpose and effect, this action implements the school board's power to assist students in schools and adopt school attendance areas as deemed necessary for the efficient operation of the school district's system. Changes are being considered based upon a consideration of school capacity and the effective utilization of district resources, as well as the district's operational innovation and efficiency planning initiative, of copy of which is attached, anyone can ask for. These strategic efforts reflect this district's commitment to a responsive and future-focused system that provide high-quality learning opportunities for every student. Staff has engaged in comprehensive analysis of boundary areas, enrollment trends, and facility capabilities to right-size the system and support sustainable growth. The summary of the rule is that recommending changes to student attendance boundaries for students' assignments within those current schools, Glendale Elementary, Citrus Elementary School, Sebastian Elementary School, Dodger Town Elementary School, Gifford Middle School, Oslo Middle School, Sebastian River Middle School, Storm Grove Middle School, to be effective July 1, 2026. And that is under lots of statutes. All right. At each meeting that was conducted, and there were several town halls that were conducted and continued to be conducted, we have another one tomorrow and another one the day after, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. At each meeting, staff was and will be available to address the proposals and to respond to questions and/or comments regarding the rule being developed. In other words, asking for citizen input. Public hearings on the final proposed rule has been scheduled for November 17 at 6:00 PM in the Joe N. Idlet Junior Teacher Education Center located at 6,557th Street, Vero Beach, 32967. It is anticipated that the final rule boundary changes will be adopted on December 17, 2025 at 6:00 PM in a special meeting and public hearing in the Joe N. Idlet Junior Teacher Education Center located at 6,557th Street, Vero Beach, which is where we are located right now. All right, I'd like to call for a motion for Discussion Initial Public Hearing and Approval of Educational and Operational Innovative and Efficiency Planning Initiative.
I make a motion.
Second.
All right. Mr. Rosario, Mr. Dyer as the second. Any discussion?
Ma'am Chair, just a, I think that was written by a lawyer, I'm not really sure. But put that in the King's English. This item will send a public hearing for the next, over the next month. We'll bring back this item in December 17 for final approval. So this is not a approval, this is to send a public hearing. Specifically, what we're doing is looking at the required, the requirements under law to change boundaries. We are changing the boundaries of all four middle schools, ultimately eliminating the attendance boundary for Storm Grove Middle School, which does not impact the current sixth and seventh graders. They will remain at that school. We had the opportunity to meet with both faculties as well as parents regarding this transition, so they fully understood what the impacts would be, which are absolutely minimal to none for sixth and seventh graders at Storm Grove. The boundaries, which are online, the change in the boundaries allows us to move to three specific middle schools. Currently, middle schools sit at 54% capacity. We are adding a seventh grade next year within our four middle schools, and then the following year, an eighth grade at our four middle schools. So the...
Middle schools or K-8s?
K- uh, middle schools, thank you. So the ability to have high...
K-8s.
Yeah, okay. Yes, yes, what she said. The ability to have high-functioning programming with schools around 45% capacity, the materials, the resources, the compensation for staff to fully function those schools at 45% capacity just isn't right by our students, it's not right by our staff, and it's not right for the community as a whole. So shifting to the three boundaries does a number of things. Improves enrollment at the middle school space in terms of around 650 to 700 kids, which is a nice size elementary school. And even though you have a boundary, 30%, approximately 30% of our students function under choice, meaning with these capacities, we'll be around 80, 85%. You have the opportunity to choose into any one of the three middle schools. We will evaluate programming at the IB program at Sebastian River. Middle School needs to be enhanced, enhanced not only in the overall programming, but strong connectivity in the K-5 space at both Sebastian Elementary School. Liberty already has the IB program, and then as well at Treasure Coast, making sure there's a strong pipeline into those specific middle schools. Vero Beach Middle School, we will expand programming around entrepreneurship. We will expand programming around the visual and performing arts, as well as the athletic programs, building strong connections and relationships with Vero Beach Senior High School, who have some prize programs that a number of people in our community can't wait to be involved in, so why not let them be involved in them at an earlier age? Gifford Middle School has a advanced programming. We're going to enhance that under the umbrella of additional gifted programming, strong gifted programming in the K-5 space. But it shifts drastically in the middle school experience, so this is the opportunity to continue that way of instruction. The board had a great conversation this morning around the innovations around middle school. That would be an example of one of those innovations that we will continue to seek out. Tomorrow, we have all of these teams coming together for a first initial meeting around problem solving, so we continue to support that, and we'll highlight the conversations that we're having at our level to signify those change. It moves the ninth grade center into the main building. A, they will fit, it will allow us to have better start times or more condensed start times. It'll allow one-third of the students not to be transported back and forth in between classes. And it'll allow our ninth graders higher access to vocational programming at those particular schools. This item will accomplish the transferring of two of our magnet schools, Rosewood and Osceola, into middle school current campuses, which will be retrofitted and designed to be full K-8s. Bathrooms revised, playgrounds added, elementary-style furniture in place for the opening of schools. That allows us to expand the offering, starting at kindergarten and growing out for our parents that are being turned away each and every single year. So in doing this work, this isn't something that we shy away from. This is something that the entire system has leaned into in an absolute great way. We ensure that it is fiscally responsible. Running less schools allows us to have more resources with a stronger touch on salary and a stronger touch on the resources we provide to kids. The initiative is allowing us to provide choice for parents. And creating just programming within the same configurations or the same flowing of a school day, periods 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, may not be what parents want. We need to have a portfolio of schools that allow parents to match the school that meets their family's interest in terms of size, in terms of programming, in terms of flexibility. And that is the work that we've charged our district to do. And I honestly believe that we are the district to do this. We are the district that has the relationships with our employees, a level of trust to say, we do not have all of the answers, but we're willing to engage in conversations to figure out what the future of public education should look like, which means we're going to have to recreate job descriptions. There are some jobs that are, you know, can be done in a different style or a different fashion in which we can compensate one person a little bit more, but shift or modify redundant or outdated job descriptions. Some job descriptions written in 1967 and 1970, look how the world has changed. So to look at job descriptions and say, this is the way that we've always done it, becomes a disservice to those who we're serving. But some of these CWA jobs, because you guys are here, I don't know enough about what you guys do. And you can create the conversation on how it should look or what should be done. Combine these two, this person should be doing this or that. So sometimes, as a leader, you just put people in the room. You encourage them to solve problems, and then you fund the problems that they're solving with their unique ideas. So one of our driving, I don't know, factors in here is that we create problem solvers at every level of the organization. And a lot of this work, from once this item is approved until we open schools next year, is empowering problem solving at every level of the organization. So next week, we, or this week, we have, I have four more presentations. We've, I, if you want to count this morning, I think it is now 19 conversations. Every single conversation has ended in a very, very positive way. The fact that we have so few parents here, so few educators here is not a, see, what I told you, you know, we're good. We need to continue to push, we need to continue to engage in the conversation, because ultimately, this isn't something that we want to be done to Indian River County. This is something we want to do for Indian River County with Indian River County. So, Madam Chair, that is the item.
Thank you. Board members, discussion?
Oh, just a question, Dr. Moore, the December 17 meeting, will that be at 6:00 PM?
Yes.
Okay.
Ms. Rosario?
Yeah, Dr. Moore, you mentioned Vero Beach Middle School. I know that you have an interest in holding on to that name, but community members don't necessarily know Vero Beach Middle School yet. So I just wanted to give you an opportunity to explain that that is actually Oslo and that we haven't actually gone through a rebranding or renaming yet.
So Oz- correct. Oslo in terms of a rebranding and accelerated programming, moving that current location, Oslo, into the Flic, which is a middle school building that had been designed, and then it's building strong connections with the high school program.
And calling, and if the selected name would be Vero Beach Middle School, because we haven't actually gone through that process yet, that would be a nice pathway for Vero Beach Elementary School students to join Vero Beach Middle School and then Vero Beach High School. So we have little Indians and we'll have fighting Indians, what will we have in between?
That's a problem for the people who are much closer to those kids to solve. So we're starting to engage with them tomorrow. I don't know if it will be, that answer would happen before school starts. Maybe towards the end of the school year, they'll do some of that marketing and advertising. And part of this process really is, you know, I think the conversation the board had today around middle school and innovation were great ideas. And we will kick off a process of saying, this really is a school system where we're not saying, go and do this, but engage in these crazy conversations about what it possibly could be. And based on the work that you do over the next several weeks and months, I may have to go back to the school board and say, hey, our design thinking groups, our principal leaders, our teacher leaders want higher flexibility around seat time to do more innovative programming. They want more flexibility around state-adopted curriculum based on some of the things that they want to do. We'd have to go and advocate for that, or the structure of the school day. So this is, at the core, a community initiative in which we're trusting our educational leaders, our support staff at every level to design something that uniquely meets the needs of all of the children in our community.
Okay, any other discussion I... I'd just like to say thank you to your team for all this hard work. I attended the town hall that was at Citrus, but it was about Glendale parents, or for Glendale parents, so it was kind of interesting. It's nice that we're listening, not just telling, because I heard it. I heard parents with concerns, and those were immediately dealt with or questioned, what can, give me more information. So it isn't just a, we're telling you this is what's happening, it's a, we want input. And I think that's important, because it is, it is the community that drives what our schools do. And so not just us, not just you, but it's a community effort. So we really appreciate that. It was nice for parents to come out and give us some input, we appreciate that. All right. So I'm going to call for a motion for Initial Public Hearing and Approval of Educational and Operational Innovation and Efficiency Planning Initiative.
Public.
Do you have public input?
Hold on one second. I got to call for the motion, and then we'll have the speaker.
You do.
Okay. All right. No, that was, it's not a consent. No. I did a first and a second, yes, I did. Sorry. Rosario and Dyer, I already got that. That was before the discussion, so you're right, I did do it. Okay, now we're opening up, but we have one speaker that is asked to speak. In this sense, because it's a public hearing, can we open it up to any other speakers? Yes, so anyone that wishes to speak, you didn't have to fill out a form, because this is what we call a public hearing. So at this time, we'll ask the person that filled out the form to come first, Thomas Kenny.
I was under the impression it was a vote to have a public hearing. Anyway. Now, I just want to say that Jennifer Pippin couldn't be here tonight for Moms for Liberty because her son's birthday today, so. It'll be birthday to Hunter. But, Dr. Moore, thank you for what you guys are doing and your staff, and the way you guys are working with speed and with clarity and as much transparency as you can possibly do in a 24-hour day, because I know this takes a lot of time and effort. And we are just excited about what you're doing, because there's an overall picture to this. It's not just the process and all the laws and dotting your i's and crossing your t's legally, which Miss Invol will probably help you do with great expertise. But it's the ability now to actually offer educational choices and curriculum and different types of things that other public school systems are not offering. And helping homeschool community people, you and I talked about addressing places and needs where they might not be so good, but they could come into our schools and do those higher AP courses and stuff where a mother might not have that type of skill, and all these different things that you've been talking about. So I really think this is good. I am very happy, Moms for Liberty is very happy about what you're doing and putting kids first and doing all these things that you're doing right now. It's inspiring to watch, and thank you very much.
Okay, so I know this is an initial to set the public hearing, so can I ask for other speakers or not? Because...
This is initial.
That's what I thought. Okay, is there anyone else that'd like to speak to this topic? All right, seeing none. Any other discussion, board members? No? All right, I call for a vote. All those in favor of setting a public hearing for December 17, 2025 at 6:00 PM for a special meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? It passes 5-0. All right, we do not have any discussion items, and at this time, I call for School Board Member Matters. Who would like to go first?
I'll go first.
Ms. Rosario?
Yeah, I just wanted to remind the public that our Code of Conduct Community and Parent Meeting will be here in this building on Tuesday, December 9 at 5:30 PM. It is incredibly important for the community to get involved and for your input. Our Code of Conduct has changed over the years because of your input, and I think it's really, really important that if you are available, you come to that meeting and you can participate. The other thing, I came to the district's Thanksgiving luncheon on Friday, and it was very, very fun. It was incredibly nice. A nice little barbecue outside. Everybody enjoyed their annual Thanksgiving luncheon, and it was just wonderful, so. There is another town hall regarding all of the changes that we are, as a community, experiencing. Everybody enjoyed their annual Thanksgiving luncheon and it was just wonderful. So there is another town hall regarding all of the changes that we are, as a community, experiencing and, and, and we are going to see happen with our schools. Tomorrow, there is the North County Town Hall that will take place at Sebastian River Middle School at 5:30, so I just wanted to announce that. And then on Wednesday, 11/19 at 5:30, the next meeting will be at Vero Beach High School. So if you have not had an opportunity to attend one of the town halls and you are interested, please, by all means, you are welcome to come to any of those town hall meetings. I know that it, we are past the date, but I just wanted to publicly give a thank you to all of our veterans in the school district and of course, in our community and make sure that you all know that I honor your service and your sacrifice and your family's service and sacrifice as well. And I'm, I'm grateful for all of the veterans who serve our country. And with that said, I hope everyone has an incredible, happy Thanksgiving.
Okay. Mr. Dyer?
Yes, two things happened is I, I want to again comment and congratulate the district on how well you guys have communicated these changes that we're really having to go through. I mean, first, you have recognized that change is coming. The, the finances from the state have really changed the way that schools operate, the voucher program and this new Schools of Hope. You need to get ahead of it and I think that what you guys are doing has been very thoughtful. I know you've been working on it for about a year, knowing that, knowing that things are, are coming, at least knowing that we had to do something, maybe not specifically what, but beginning talking about it. And I think that what you've done and the way that you've handled it has been very good. I did attend the, the meeting at Rosewood and Magnet and was very interested in hearing the comments there and I think there were good comments. There were some things that were, that were, some, some objections, a lot doing with transportation, but I think some of the things that you did were very innovative and thoughtful about having a depot and having ways that you can drop people off and actually meeting with the parents and understanding their needs and concerns. But one of the things that came through to me and not only in that school, but in, from what I've understood in many of the schools that, that you guys have talked with is everybody loves their school and they want to make sure that that culture is maintained as we go into new facilities and that the community that they have through that school is maintained. So I, I think that that's something that we really have to be aware of as we move forward and, and make sure that the strong culture and the community and the love of your school, of your individual school is really what matters to you and that we maintain the, the spirit of that as we move facilities and, and I think really expand programs, expand offerings and align our curriculum more all the way through elementary school, middle school and high school. The other thing that we did is I accompanied the superintendent and a group to Tallahassee to talk with the legislature about the, actually the head of the Education Committee and Speaker Desert, Desert Kennedy about some of the issues that we have being an A school district. You know, this, this district has been a high performing academic school district, has led the state for, over the last three years in terms of improvements, has been an A school district three years in a row, has gone from 38th to fifth in the state out of 67 districts, is now tied for second in the state in terms of literacy. We have gone to 71%. The state average is, I think, in 50, 58%. We're 71. Again, three years ago, we were, or four years ago, we were, been down around 50%. So to go from 52 to 71 tied for second in the state. We have the fourth best graduation rate, I think. Is it fourth best now or fifth?
It fluctuates between two and four, but I think it's fourth this year.
Fourth this year, fourth best graduation rate in the state. So many, many good things have gone on and we have innovated and have been able to move forward and improve across, across the board. And I think that's just been fantastic that we have been able to do that in all the other challenges that we're facing in, in education. But again, we relayed the thoughts to the, to the legislature that here is a high performing school district that has had As three time, three years in a row and has had the best growth in the state and we're treated no differently. Can't we have more flexibility to innovate? We're a very innovative school district. We have had 15?
I think 15.
15 other school districts visit us to take a look at what we're doing, how have we done such improvement in such a short time? And so we believe that we've, that we are a district that can demonstrate to the state how education in public schools can be done and how you can meet and change it. So I think that we were received very well. We spent, which is very unusual within Tallahassee, we spent two hours with the committee and with the policy writers afterwards, which is a pretty lengthy meeting for, for Tallahassee. And I think they were very interested in, in what we're doing and hopefully their ears will be open to make some of the changes. It'll give us more flexibility to continue to innovate the way we have.
Thank you. Dr. Jones?
It's a good starting point for me. I met with Senator Groll, I think, a couple of months ago and expressed some of my concerns and talked about flexibility. And she asked us to send a note to her about what, what would be the best things where we could be flexible and the same, what Mr. Dyer was just talking about. Listen, we're an A school district. We keep climbing. We're working hard with all students. Our graduation rate keeps going up. I mean, we're doing very, very well. So I think if we keep hitting and our community understands how important it is for us to be innovative and we get their support, we've just gone, got to keep that focused. The Sphero competition at Vero Beach High School on Saturday was wonderful with the coding. Almost every elementary school is represented and a few middle schools, the kids are doing a great job. I went to the red, white and blue concert for our veterans and it was wonderful at Vero Beach High School. And Dr. Moore, I think I share with you, we received an email about Veterans Day and what it means on the 11th day, the 11th hour and so forth. As a daughter of a veteran and a wife of a veteran, I think this is very, very important that we honor that. As far as my committees, a value adjustment board met, executive round table, economic development council will meet tomorrow. They're looking at a, a plan, you know, for our county on where we're going to go, a strategic plan, and the schools are very much involved with that and how our schools are doing. The homecoming parade of Vero Beach High School is wonderful. I know it was after the fact, but they did a great thing. I attended the Learning Alliance kickoff. Thank you to the Learning Alliance and the, and the board of the Learning Alliance and Ray Oglethorpe, who is stepping down for president there. But that private-public partnership, that's what make, you know, that's how things are working and I'm very appreciative of that as a community member. Vero Beach High School football, we do play Lake Dona on Friday. I used to do those brackets at the Florida High School Athletic Association. It is a 7:00 PM start time. A lot of other ones have 7:30, but I checked with the executive director today, we're okay on 7:00 PM as long as that's put out there in the public. The gift, we talked about gifted programs, but gifted students, I know we probably talked about this last time at Dodger Town, but, and I saw a lot of that at Vero Beach High School with this Sphero competition. I love that we keep pushing that, that we keep pushing that. I think that's about it. I just, you know, as far as what we talked about today with our innovation, our leadership and our community connection, I think that is what will make things work.
Okay, thank you. I attended the Indian River County zoning and planning meeting this last week and there's a new resurgence of many, many housing projects on the horizon. So say goodbye to all that land that you see. Don't know where all the animals are going to go. And they just keep coming, so it's, it's interesting. The Treasure Coast Council Local Governments meeting, I attended that. I have unfortunately been homebound and can't drive because of my surgery, so I have been on Zoom a lot for meetings. And that meeting was interesting because they're monitoring all the tax reform bills. And these are the specific ones that they are monitoring, so I thought I'd hand those to you. And it's interesting because there are several bills that are out there this year that are starting. I'm sure there'll be several more about elimination of taxes, property taxes, and then new exemptions and expanded benefits and valuation assessments. So far, so good on education kind of being out of that.
Yeah.
But you never know. Just like last year with the Schools of Hope, we, we followed that. I followed that, those two bills that were going along in the House and the Senate and they changed at the last second. And so you never know what's going to happen until the last day, shiny die. So just keep monitoring those. It's interesting what's going on. It will affect us somehow with taxing. So as community members, of course, we're going to be affected by that. Vero Beach High School, I got to finally go to a, to a football game. It lasted one quarter. It was really nice and beautiful and nice to see the community out there supporting our teams. Citrus and Glendale Tal, Town Hall, I walked, that was all the way in the back of the campus and I-
That's true.
Had my little walker going all the way to the back of the campus. And it was nice to hear parents not afraid to speak up and, or being offered the opportunity to speak to a district member if they didn't want to speak to the, in front of the whole group. And so that is being offered. So anybody that wants to go and speak, please go and speak, go and ask your questions, go and tell us about what issues you might have that you think are coming with this plan so that you can problem solve and, and work with parents. And then I made emails to our legislators, I think it was at 5:00 AM before I went into my surgery and spoke, and sent emails to both Senator Groll and to Representative Bracket about my, our concerns of Schools of Hope. I'm going in January on a trip to Tallahassee for the day in the legislature. I know that there is one bill already going up for this, but I'm sure that I've heard, there's lots of talk about it. So it'll be interesting to watch what happens to that in the next couple of weeks. I see it's on the horizon. It's not just our community and all the people that have sent emails or messages and letters. We appreciate it so much. Keep it going because the more they hear that the community members are concerned, the more they'll listen. And so we appreciate that. And at this time, we'll have the superintendent's closing.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And as we move into the last full week before, before Thanksgiving, we're, we're definitely not easing into the end of this calendar year. There's a significant amount of work that we have done and significant amount of work yet to be done. And me personally, I'm very thankful, as, as hard and as complex as this shift is, I'm excited to do it. Excited to be put in a place to have the opportunity to have such a large impact across one community. Excited to engage with a team that's before you to do this work with, on behalf of, of this community. So we could have said, you know what, let, let's just keep on doing what we're doing, but then we would have sold this community short. So we chose to do the difficult thing. We chose to do the complex thing. And it is really, really rewarding, even though it's, it's every night, it's early, you know, some faculties, you have faculty meetings in the morning. So you, we begin and end our day engaging in dialogue and conversation. But at the end of the day, all of this hard work is solely to get to the starting line. And the starting line really is when this board says, yes, go forth and reinvent this, this school system. And that would be December 17th. And it is very, very exciting. So as we move into the Thanksgiving holiday, just so thankful to do this work for this board, for this community, with this team, and ultimately do this work for our community. The opportunity to have impact is something that I have been chasing my, my entire career and this initiative will have more impact than anything else that I've ever done. So very excited.
Okay. With that, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out and viewing tonight. And at this time, before I adjourn the meeting, I'd like to say happy Thanksgiving and I am very thankful for you, Dr. Moore. At this time, it is 7:22 and we are adjourned.